Conference will now be recorded.
All right, everybody. It is six o'clock on Tuesday of October 21st, 2025, and I call this regular meeting of council to order here at the social scene in Victoria Beach. I respectfully acknowledge we're meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, Cree, and Assinibo Nation, Dakota, Assinibo and Dene people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes that were made in the past, and we look forward to the present, and the present and the future will require cooperation and partnership with First Nation and Métis communities to bring about thoughtful collaboration and reconciliation efforts. I'd just like to say that I have been criticized by a small group of residents lately for not putting my land acknowledgement words into action. When I was first elected as head of council in 2018, I started saying a land acknowledgement at each meeting. I've changed it somewhat over the years, past seven and a half years. I continue to say and modify the land acknowledgement because I believe it matters, because I believe that we all need to continue to hear words about reconciliation and collaboration, because I believe that we all need to think about and consider what we can do personally and collectively to bring about positive change and productive thoughtful relationships. Council has also been criticized for not seeking Indigenous and Métis engagement in recent discussions around private structures on public or crown lands. I agree that council and our residents need to do more to collaborate with and learn from Indigenous and Métis elders, residents, and neighbors. Collaboration and reconciliation efforts do need to be made, and they need to be made genuinely and with real intent to have respectful cooperative ongoing relationships. Reaching out to Indigenous and Métis groups only when contentious issues arise is, in my view, disingenuous and insulting to their leaders and to the reconciliation effort. We have work to do in building relationships, and we will be investigating how to move forward with understanding and in cooperation with Indigenous and Métis people. Thank you, Frank, for setting up and taking down of our meetings here at the social scene. Introductions around the table all start on my far left.
Counselor Ian Chasman.
Steve Axonathan.
Longterrier.
Penny McMorris, Mayor.
Irwin Cupcake, counselor.
And I'm Graham Randall.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Be it resolved, the agenda be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you. Second. Steve, thank you. Any additions to the agenda? Irwin?
I'd like to add a resolution dealing with-
Can you?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to add a resolution dealing with the adoption of the Shoreline Advisory Committee report.
The report, Irwin, or process? Or both?
It's both. Report and subsequent process.
All right. Any other additions, gentlemen? All right. All those hearing none for none. Oh boy. Hearing nothing further. All those in favor?
All right.
Carrie, thank you. Moving on to the minutes of the October 7th meeting, be it resolved, the minutes of the October 7th, 2025, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented. May I have a mover, please? Ian, thank you. Second. Graham, thank you. Gentlemen, any discussion on these? Thank you, Irwin, by the way, for chairing that meeting when I couldn't be here.
I've read the minutes, and they, I read the minutes, and they look complete and accurate to me.
Any other comments, gentlemen? All right. All those in favor?
All right.
Carrie, thank you. Moving on to the October 15th, border revision.
Irwin. Sorry.
Be it resolved, the minutes of the October 15th, 2025, border revision be adopted as presented. May I have a mover, please? Thank you, Graham. Second. Thank you, Steve. Council about the border revision on October 15th at the RM office in Winnipeg. We had three applications, and they were dealt with at that time. Launch, should I read this actual resolution?
I don't think you need to. Just a resolution for the order of minutes.
Just the resolution for the minutes. So council did get the assessment appeals and our revision orders in their package. I trust you recall and read them. Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right. All those in favor? All right. Carrie, thank you, gentlemen. All right. We are moving on to the committee reports. I have Public Works report. The high winds over the past few weeks. Public Works has been extremely busy removing trees that were blocking roads and cutting dangerous trees. Our dangerous tree list continues to grow as Public Works and our arborists have been taking care of dead and dangerous tree issues in the RM as frequently as possible. Because of the high winds, you'll probably all have noticed, there are huge brush piles to be cleaned up. Any brush that has been put out on the road allowance will be picked up by Public Works. Residents are also encouraged to draw the brush off at the garbage depot area for chipping, and many of you have done that, which is appreciated. Bag leaves will also be picked up separately from the brush pickup. There are several initiatives ongoing currently with Public Works. Parking lot expansion work is ongoing. Parking lot emergency exits are being created and worked on. That's one on Eighth, the southwest corner of Eighth, and the northeast corner of Highway 59 near the MTS building. Brushing and dead fall are being removed as part of Fire Smart Project near the Moonlight Inn and Village Green. Drainage, ditching issues, and culverts are being replaced as needed. Trail maintenance is being planned to improve our current trail systems. Fall and winter garbage pickup is now in effect every Monday if you are on the list. If not, and you need Monday garbage pickup, please contact Public Works to get on the list. Preventative maintenance is ongoing as always on all municipal equipment. Safety checks have been completed as required. Grading of roads is ongoing. Civic signs have been ordered for this year and will be installed by Public Works in the fall, weather permitting. Air-resistant garbage bins are still available. I believe the current price is still $315. Order forms can be found on the website. Water samples from the fire hall and the Olympic compound are taken into Winnipeg regularly for mandatory testing. And don't forget to sign up for VB Connect, our communication system. Any questions on Public Works, gentlemen?
Nope.
Thank you. I will move on to finance. Counselor Chadity?
Yes, I went through the budget and the operating budget. Balance sheet is showing 4.1 million in cash, GIC, fire truck, they're 1.5 million. Total assets is up 14.3 million. liabilities, 2.7. Part of that includes deferred revenue, which I guess goes towards the fire hall and the fire truck. You'll see that in the operating budget. I'll point that out. So net surplus was 1.3 million, so total surplus is 10.3%. Operating budget as of September 30, taxes are collected, 2.7. Total course revenue was 262,000. The budget was 238,000, so it's actually $25,000 higher than expected, and it's up around 10%. There's still some revenue to come to the parking lot. I assume that comes later on in the, this season, I guess. Sales and services, total sales and services is up 9,000, it's 160,000. Grants are down 50,000. Fees, permits, licenses are down 19,000. And you've got total miscellaneous revenue and transfer fees down 760,000. So that's what I was referring to when I was talking about deferred revenue, then the liability. So one offsets the other. Expenses. So just to point out, Irwin, if someone's asking, police and the CSO, they've got 50% of their budget left. Probably should have a little closer to 25%. They don't want to go over, that's my point is-
But remember, the CSOs are all shut down, so the expenditure's going to fall, Irwin, reduce.
Okay, so just add that to the police, and it should come in on budget. Perfect. And building inspections down on 12%, so that's getting a little close to. Just pointed out, total expenses, 3.5 million. That's surplus, 1.4. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments, gentlemen? All right. Thanks very much. Steve, fire department.
So we're having a couple of communications issues that we need to resolve regarding the reporting. Surprised to say from now, there was a major windstorm, two major windstorms that swept through the community. The fire department had a dance full. At the same time, I'd also like people to take a look at what kind of trees are falling, because with, and I know that I harp on this a lot, but it's, it's just, we need to repeat this so often. Conifer trees are typically the ones that are going to break because they can't lose their leaves in a major windstorm, which generally hits in the fall, so that doesn't, that's actually causing more, more problems. But at least right now, we have an opportunity to clear out even more brush and remove even more of those dangerous trees from our properties.
Understood. Police, Irwin, fire department, please?
Yes, I do. Activity levels in September are dropping off. During the month, there were eight situations where we were called in to assist people outside the Anishinaabe Valley. I'll speak more about that later. There was one break in enter. I don't have the details on that, but that only, that's only the second break in enter in the whole year so far. There were five parking tickets issued. There were two investigations of two disturbances. There were four fires that the police attended to. They'll generally, you know, go and assist the fire department with traffic control and so forth. There were two motor vehicle collisions in September. The police department did 35 patrols during the month. There were two investigations, probably five investigations of suspicious activity. There were two thefts, and there were 10 laser traffic tickets issued. Our chief counsel provided to council with a very interesting report. During the, from the months of May, June, July, and August and September, there were over 40 call-out incidents from the RCMP and/or citizens outside of Victoria Beach. We attended a joint meeting of the, between our council and Alexandria last week, and when we brought this to their attention, they were, I think the word shock would not be applied. We're going to be looking into, obviously, our police department have always been cooperative with the RCMP to provide assistance, because in wintertime, when there's only two officers here, the RCMP provide backup to our guys. Having 40 incidents in a four-month period is way, way, way beyond reasonable in terms of doing this for no compensation. It stresses our, our police department's ability to monitor our own, our own community. So we're going to have some, there'll be interesting discussions with Alexandria on that point. Again, the CSO, the unit shut down at the end of August. We have two personnel, two, three personnel on staff. This is the time to secure your property. Make sure things are locked up, windows locked, doors locked, and do whatever you can to make it harder for someone to break in. If you see any suspicious activity, there was one reported earlier in the month, someone was walking around a property for no apparent reason, please call the police if you see that sort of thing happen. That is my report. Any questions or comments?
No. Thank you. All right. Ian, back to you with golf course, please.
Well, the golf course is now closed. As I mentioned earlier, they had a successful year. I think revenues 10% higher than what they expected. Penny, thank you for stopping by, picking up the keys, and I guess the, what do you call that? The cash?
The debit machine, the laptop.
All, all the equipment. And I guess you gave all of that to Long, so that'll be there for next year. Lots of compliments this year on the golf course. I think because of the rain and sun, that course was in great shape. I played it for Giants myself, and a lot of people were complimenting how well I was doing, how I had taken care of the course. So it's done a great job. It's just the second year now. And we did, we were like fortunate enough to get the tree guys in to clear out a few of the areas, those pathways between fairways. So they did that. So hopefully we'll do a few more next year, and hopefully we'll maybe buy another two golf carts. This is going to be a big hit this year. That's all I got.
Thank you. I think the problem with more golf carts is storage.
Yeah.
Where do we store them? But Elian's looking at expanding Shed Six. I'm looking at you too, because you golf there so much. I think it's Shed Six that she was looking at spending and go up the back, and I think she's talked to you about that, Graham, but-
Yeah, probably, probably six, extension or extension of Unit Number Six. That's in the works, and I'll touch on it greatly in five minutes.
Thank you.
But I think also, I think one cart died.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm thinking of making two more this year. If we could just replace all the old ones, which are anywhere from 20 to 35 years old, that it's time to, just move those in there.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to municipal buildings, please, Graham.
Okay, that's me. Municipal buildings, on the golf course, just to keep carrying on, work is in progress or being planned for a new drill, new paint on the clavos, wall steam cleaning, carpet painting, the trim in the clavos that block our houses. All, all this is being lined up to get a head start on it for, for next season. The, I'm expecting details that will enable me to get further quotes for this expanded locker space of 12 by 16. Adam was working on a, on a sketch, and then all of the outline specification and all got three quotes for it. It's nice to have that in the bag. We might even get a head start on it this year. It'll depend on the budget, but we're, we're, once again, so that some of the heavy lifting's already done before next season begins. Stairs, as far as our stairs, there were some minor revisions to clavos. Number one, by our handrail specialists, Chris D. And we've already, we've already approved some of the engineering studies associated with more extensive work on Patricia. And so that's, that's in the works coming up for, for next year as well. And once again, we have to try and stay ahead of it, so we're ready to roll when, when the, when the weather permits. Winter shutdowns, arrangements are in place for drainage and winter proofing of all municipal buildings, care of the 48 plumbing, including the VB clavos and director's cars, the Moonlight Inn, the VB store, the bakery, the golf course clavos, the barracks building, and also, let's not forget, the ground cover, the bags of leaves or straw on the, the, the two holding tanks that seem to give us precept problems in winter, which is the barracks and the police office. So I've talked today, and he has this well at hand. The next item on municipal buildings is going to take a little bit more time to, to present with your permission, and that is the proposed interim police office facility. Conversations between Chief McKinnon and Adco continue regarding monthly rental pricing and power requirements for a suitable building. And this will also be brought up at the, at next week's police board meeting. There's, there's nothing much that, that we can do on this until we have some prices. The price for this thing to, to lease it, how much per month? And we, I've also got one or two people lined up to press out for us the electrical hook-up. That, that, yeah, the electrical and the, and the plumbing, that all has to go hand in hand with it. Now, I'd like to ask your, your purser, will I just briefly run through part of the report we have from Chief McKinnon? The issues associated with this are an inadequate infrastructure, lack of storage and documentation, cleanliness and professionalism. There's no lock to secure rooms. The locker room offer, an offer of preparedness. The required lockers, and we just don't have the, the, the space for that. This goes on. This impacts officers who should not be driving personal vehicles, holding a uniform for safety and professionalism. Incidents may require officers to shower and clean up. A proper locker room enhances the professionalism, privacy, and wellness. From a supplement to his report, if I could quote from him, this is Chief McKinnon speaking, "I am aware that there are plans for a new Victoria Beach police station once the VB fire hall is complete." As a matter of fact, these plans still have to be vetted by our, our current police chief, but he's, he's working on that. However, however, with construction issues such as planning, funding, and timing often extend and are beyond projections, even if construction begins soon, we would still need to move all paperwork, documentation, and equipment into another location during the build. For this reason, securing an interim office space now only makes sense. It allows us to operate properly and professional in the meantime, without waiting on uncertain timelines. My personal comment is that I am convinced that our police office service is hanging by a thread as far as failure to comply with provincial and police regulations, and that we need to act on this sooner rather than later. One might argue, well, we've operated under this ratty little closet for 20 years. Why not another year or two? Well, we just about reached the end of the road. We've attracted more attention with it, and I am concerned that we, you know, we, I don't want to be alarmist, but we, we could lose our police service if we don't get them into a proper facility, even if it's a half decent temporary facility. And I would like to stress this to the point of injecting a sense of urgency into this discussion, that we need to act on this now. Now, that's partly editorial, but it comes from my heart. So thank you for listening.
And we need costs, though, before we make-
We gotta have costs before we can do it.
I was just going to say, Graham, I think that's part of the subcommittee. We're going to, or myself and myself, we're going to take that on and look at the costs and then talk to the chief, go through the, I guess, the preliminary drawings that we already had, see if they're sufficient, or see what he wants to change. I mean, we're getting close. I think this fire hall, I haven't talked about it yet, but this fire hall should be done by December. Yep, we're very close. So now it's a question of some money. Well, I'm satisfied, I'm satisfied, Penny, if we get some money, though, probably we have. And I'm sure it's, you know, $400,000 or so, right?
Well, money's already applied for grant, but-
But when I'm getting it, maybe we should sit down, have a meeting, the subcommittee, and then we should-
Absolutely.
You know, put our ducks in a row.
And I'd like to suggest that we deal with the same subcommittee that served us very well on the fire hall. That's you and me and Irwin as the police chair. Yes, but we have to have the numbers. Soon as we get the numbers, let's meet and get together. And how, how soon can we?
Well, when we get together next week, it's a group, and we'll just hash it out and put a, a list together of things to do, and, and, that's great. I appreciate your picking up the baton. That's good for you. Sounds good. Thanks.
I can tell you that the police board will be meeting with a provincial representative from the Department of Justice. The province is in the process of developing some new municipal policing standards, but that has not yet been completed. The question that will likely come out of this, if, if you impose new standards on the police department, who's going to pay for it? And we're going to be lobbying in Congress to hopefully provide some financial assistance so that we could meet their new standard. But the new standard has not yet been established. So we're not, we're not in breach. I totally agree with what, you know, Chief McKinnon is saying. You know, the police office is not much more than a police phone booth. And, and, you know, we will be dealing with it. We have plans to, to, to make it right. The question is, how quickly can we find the money to pay for it? That's the basic question. There's no, there's no doubt in my mind that this council is fully supportive of providing the police with an appropriate facility. It's a question of how do we make it happen?
We'll make it happen. Thank you, Irwin.
Is that your report, Graham?
Yeah, you've had enough of that. Yeah, I'll quit while I'm ahead, or before I get any further behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve, any updates on doctors?
So earlier, it's closed. All the equipment that needed to be stored is stored. We were wondering where the A D was for a second, but figured that card out. Just like an hour put in, if I know what this is, oh my God, I know where this is, and it's like, oh yeah. Yeah, it's pretty much cleared up. Yes, one storm knocked a couple of trees down up in the yard, so that's going to get taken care of. It doesn't really seem to be anything that's going to be outstanding for next year. Probably just a few small minor repairs. Things in terms of cleanliness this year improved quite a bit. We are going to put together, put together a final doctors, doctors' reports in the near future. For, again, anybody out there who has a family doctor, I know there are combined, but please let us know and ask them next time you see them if they want to spend a couple of weeks or possibly a month in a resort area, because we would love to talk with them. If we can get a couple more doctors, at least one at the end of the summer and possibly one at the, one at the beginning, then we might be able to extend our season a little bit longer and provide a little more protection for the community. Cause I have others, there's one on the north pole right now.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Steve, where is the equipment being stored?
I know that answer is, I've drawn a blank right now. Sorry, I think Public Works, but that-
Public Works used to take it because prior to that, a private citizen used to take it home, and that, that's just not a good idea.
For some reason, I'm thinking that was moved, but yeah. Public Works comes up, I just can't spread it over this. Yeah.
I can check tomorrow.
Thank you, Steve. As far as the, the doctors, there's always a search for more doctors. If I can suggest that each of us is counselors and anyone in the unit, we all have, pretty well, all of us have doctors. We all have. Why don't you ask your GP, if he would be interested in spending a couple of pleasant weeks out here in a lovely vintage cottage? Let's, let's ask. Let's spread the word. Mine has already responded positively. He just missed the last year, but he's on tech for this year. Let's get a little bit more proactive. If you got a doctor, ask them what's he going to do.
Then please just don't wait until the spring.
Exactly.
Yeah, like, ask them now, and we can get them, we get them registered earlier. It seems as though a lot of people ask in the spring. By that point, it's already too late because people already have their, the vacation schedules.
Exactly. Right. So let's get a head start on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Communications? I don't have much of an update of any. Steve?
I already mentioned the fire thing, so sorry on that.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to building inspector Graham.
A report to compliments of our building inspector for this boat win. This is for the month of September. It was two sheds, two additions, one or four lifted levels, one demo and one bunk. Doesn't sound like much, but the value of permits for September were $300,000. The year-to-date value of permits is $5.79 million, a little bit below our ultimate high, but a nice round number.
The year-to-date value of permits is five point seven nine million dollars, a little bit below our alpha and high better, a nice round number. The fees collected were thirty six hundred dollars in November for a total of thirty eight thousand dollars year-to-date in fees collected. And thank you to Curtis for this.
All right. Any questions? Trails, I, I'm behind in getting back to the company who was doing the trail study for us. I need to return an email this week and then we can hopefully forward their final report on to council for review. My apologies about that. And I know there have been some volunteers out cleaning up the trails. Public Works is talking about cleaning up some trails. I know some trees came down in these last two windstorms. Hopefully they're cleared up. Anything to add there, Steve?
Yeah, it's not a new tree. It's like a hurricane. Some of them aren't really passable at all. That big forested area, we need to start addressing. I would like us to start addressing it next year. It'd be more of a forestry project than it would fire smart, but it's the same thing when you consider the risk to the community is just sort of more of an extension to really look at the municipal areas. It would also mean that when we get these big windstorms, there'd be a lot less, then we have to do, a lot less we have to rely on volunteers for. So I would like us to take a look at that. Alpha did reach out to me asking about it because of, you know, they were open to doing a, a project onto, on the golf course, but we all know how that went. So I, I would suggest starting to do strips through the, through the forested area that they, for those who don't know what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the big square in the middle of the municipality and start removing all the underbrush and conifers from, say, a fifty foot wide space along the, along the public area and then just start working back. Because there's so much, there's so much underbrush that can go up in flames. But also when we have these big, these big fun, these big windstorms, they just cause that much more of a fire hazard.
Thank you. Moonlight Inn, Graham, any updates?
Yeah, I have a brief update. Aaron Goldley, late last week. Ian is closed and he's on his way out of town. We chatted about the progress of the project and it looks like we're nearing the end of the work-related invoices from all right construction and the cash draws from our donor donor whom we commend for their unwavering support on this project. There remains one loose end that's being tied up even as we speak. The dishwashing equipment which can't be removed, I'm sorry, which can't be winterized. Every year it's been a nasty task to rip it out and transport it to Public Works to keep it warm. They, they have, they have come up with a, a nice solution. They've, they're looking at equipping the walk-in cooler with a baseboard heater so that we can maintain above freezing temperature in there and let's provide an alarm, a monitored alarm for it in case it, it ever fails. They're, they're going ahead with this and the, the R M is more than happy to pay for the baseboard and alarm. So I've advised them and this gave us an enormous leap we need to Public Works because they were looking forward to that, that project. That only use one dishwasher in the bakery, but it's smaller and more portable. And Mitchell will oversee that's removal and installation. So that, that wraps it up, but I believe on a very positive note for the Moonlight Inn. This year, we will, we have talked about and we're hoping to orchestrate a grand opening of the Moonlight Inn early next summer and details will follow. Okay, that's the Moonlight Inn report. Thank you.
Thank you. Shoreline Advisory, Irwin?
Just a reminder, we currently have a vacancy for a member of the Shoreline Advisory Committee who would be a property owner in the V R A, Ron Shoreline. Few people have already applied for the position and we will be formalizing the selection process shortly. I do wanna shout out to Sally Lawler and thank her for bringing to council's attention and as part of the delegation, the need for council to seek out and have consultation with First Nations and Maytee groups. I've had some discussions by email with Jennifer Inberg and yesterday I had an interesting opportunity. Steve Topic is, he's our shoreline technical engineer and he, with the consent of the committee, has applied for a grant that will deal with climate change's impact on water levels in Lake Winnipeg. We're on the shortlist for that, but we're optimistic. But as part of that discussion, I raised a question for, for, to a member of the federal government, the Climate Change Office. I said, I feel like I'm a duck out of water on this, this indigenous issue. Can you provide me through to Shoreline Advisory Committee some guidance? And he said, yes, we have some people that specialize in this area and I'm going to have them contact you. So I'm looking forward to that discussion. It's a process that needs to be followed. I think we need to incorporate it into almost every activity that the municipality is involved in. So I'm learning on that file and look forward to reporting. Again, thanks Sally for bringing it to our attention. Going forward, Shoreline will be reconvening shortly, once a new member has been confirmed. There are some issues that will be coming out of the Shoreline Report, some, some issues that will have to be dealt with. Also, I'm sure council will be assigning responsibilities to Shoreline on specific issues. Thank you.
Any comments, gentlemen? Okay, thank you. Ian, Fire Hall, please.
I was at the Fire Hall Order today, also checked in last week and talked to Eric, who's the site foreman. They've really come a long way. The building is up. The slab has been poured, septic tank, I believe is in, well, it's been drilled. Right now, they're working on the framing, trying to frame the walls. Rupt in plumbing is there for the washrooms and the kitchen, that sort of thing. They put the gravel back in to build it up towards the outside walls. On the floor slab, there was, Gus was actually there yesterday and had a chat with them and said that the floor should be completely, unclear, but smoother through the whole process. In one corner it's not, so they're gonna go back and they're gonna sand that down. So it's nice that Gus is still on the job here, keeping a hell of a go for us. Neat brush and downspouts are in. They're putting a concrete apron around the outside of the building. They're spraying the insulation as, and also Gus was there talking to them about that. I didn't know this, but when you spray insulation, it creates a certain amount of heat and it makes the metal come in. So it sort of bubbles the outside look. So when you spray styrofoam in this temperature, you've got to put a layer on, stop, set, put another layer on. And so that's what he's trying to stop the process and hopefully they'll get that done in the next two weeks. The boards are being installed and they'll finish up the insulation and the truss for the second floor will come in later this weekend. So, you know, when I talked to Wes, who's the president of L C L, saying that their goal is to get this done in December, so. So if they're a couple of weeks late in January, you know, they've done an excellent job as far as some of those things that we wanted to reconsider as far as the sanding, he agrees and he's gonna get the guys to do that. So everything's on track and so that's all we have to say.
Well, great. Thank you. Other committees, yesterday I spent the day at a couple of meetings. One was the Eastern Region Municipal Committee and that is eleven municipalities and we met in the Arm of Alexander. We discussed the lack of cell service and emergency radio coverage during wildfire events this past summer in Bird River and Ractaboni and the impacts that that has on the safety of not only the firefighters, but the residents as well. You know, you can drive down Highway forty-four and hit a dead zone. Highway three seventeen, you hit a dead zone. It's ridiculous in this, in this province. And it is scary for those who are in a fire situation and they can't get information. We discussed the school tax issue and the financial impact that the way funding is determined and collected on municipalities and on residents. The group of eleven have municipalities have signed a letter that's being sent to the Minister of Education, the Minister of Finance on this matter. Again, all of them, R M's signed off on it. Canadian Nuclear Laboratories attends these meetings. And our meeting in February will take place in Pinawa, followed by a tour of the C N L site. I've never been out there, so I'm looking forward to that. They were talking about recycling costs, which comes up at every meeting and how municipalities are facing rising costs and, and, and no markets for some of our product. And recycling does not pay for itself or cover our costs. It, it costs us money. So we do, this group continues to lobby the province to review the multi-material stewardship mandate and try and improve how recycling materials and recycling are handled in Manitoba. Then in the afternoon, I went to the St. George Community Center for the Northeast Man Municipal Forum hosted by the Arm of Alexander. We heard a presentation by Manitoba Wildlife Federation about threats to public access to Crown lands. There will be a resolution put forward for discussion at the A M M in November that deals with this issue and the impacts that could be seen and felt by hunters, anglers, trappers and all users of public lands and some private landowners. Sunrise School Division trustees, many of them were there and there was a roundtable discussion with municipalities who have, who are served by Sunrise School Division to see how they could do better. What are they doing well? What aren't they doing well? And of course budgets came up and costs came up and seems to be a common issue. We are not in Sunrise School Division, but I, I did hear the concerns from around my table mates and they are very similar to our concerns. And the last but not least of the committees, we've got another report from our E V, Ad hoc meeting. They had their second meeting recently and they provided us with an ongoing research commentary. And they look, they will be looking, okay. I look forward to further discussions on a reasonable short and long-term solution to E V charging the infrastructure for and in our community and I appreciate the work that John Hapinstall and his group have accomplished to date. And I look forward to hearing more from them. Any other committees that you gentlemen have been having, wish to report on?
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Irwin.
I attended the Eastern Region Health Authority Committee, Committee. And that's a committee that's composed comprised of individual members from each news column within the Eastern Region. Good news is happening, the staffing levels in Pine Falls Emergency are improving. They've been able to recruit some additional doctors and healthcare aides. There is a program that's being run right now in Bolshager. It's quite successful. It's a two-year program for licensed practical nurses. And they're actually looking to extend the program. So if someone, if you have young people out there that might be interested in becoming a licensed practical nurse, there's an opportunity there. And there's something else we've worked on, trying to develop a program for healthcare aides. That's a, that doesn't necessarily, you know, you don't have to be a young person to be involved in that. Let's say there's a person in their, they have a little more time, they could easily become a healthcare aide. So this work is, this training is being held in Bolshager. So it's, the idea, it reduces the, if you have to go from Pine Falls or from wherever into the city for training, that becomes a problem. So having access to training in Bolshager, I think will hopefully improve the training and we'll get more healthcare aides and more licensed practical nurses out of that. So it was a sad story, unfortunately, we suddenly lost a very good emergency doc who worked out of Stone Hall. Doctor fifty-seven years old. Tough to fill those places.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Graham.
Just a quick question to, to help me with my ignorance. What's the difference between an L P and a nurse practitioner?
I don't know the full technical answer. A licensed practical nurse has to complete a two-year course, A.
And then R M.
And then, then there's a registered nurse, which is a higher level. That's a university degree. Then there's a licensed, what's the other one?
Nurse practitioner.
A nurse practitioner is probably halfway between registered nurse and a doctor. They can do some diagnostic work, general bill work, hand in hand with the physician, often within a clinic. And either that person does some initial triage work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything further on committees? Be it resolved to accept the committee reports for September as presented. May I have a mover? Thank you, Ian. Second, Steve. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to finances, be it resolved following list of accounts, do you have any resolution for me? Following list of accounts, be approved for payment. Checks number one three eight zero six to one three eight four one in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and five cents. May I have a mover? Thank you. Ian, second, Steve. Ian, any comments on, on the accounts, Graham?
Not much. Eighty thousand dollars I believe is the amount. Ten thousand three hundred was spent on gravel to sort of level up the ground to the new fire hall. About eighteen thousand dollars was spent on tree removal, which is something that we did last week.
All right, thank you. Any further questions, gentlemen? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, no business arising on previous minutes. I'll move on to other business, council meetings for December twenty twenty-five and all of twenty-six. Be resolved to confirm the council meeting dates for twenty twenty-six as attached in Schedule A. Further be it resolved to cancel the planned council meetings of the second of December and the sixteenth of December twenty twenty-five and instead have one council meeting on the ninth of December twenty twenty-five at six P M in Winnipeg, combined with the virtual meeting location of the East Beaches Social Team. May I have a mover? Steve, thank you. Okay, for a second, thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen? Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just wondering why we're doing the, oh, sorry, we're canceling the first meeting on the second. Or do I have the wrong?
For December?
Yes.
We're canceling both of those scheduled December meetings and moving to one on the ninth. So the meeting was scheduled for the second and the sixteenth. Those are both being changed to one meeting on the ninth.
Okay.
In a minute.
Wouldn't it make more sense to do the scheduled second meeting? Because that's usually when we have all of our reports and everything.
We can have.
Just so that way it's like, generally like that's the staging, right? Because it's always a month in between of every time we sit down to say our reports. It's, it's a small thing, but.
There's not as much going on in December though either, so maybe the committee reports will be less. Just be maybe a slightly longer meeting.
Yeah, I think we can combine them effectively. There's not much difference between the ninth and the sixteenth of that time of the year. So I'm, I'm okay with what size gets solved for the ninth.
Any other comments on those, on the rest of the dates?
No, they're, they're pretty much pretty usual, pointy book that I could see. It looks good.
So we moved down to one meeting in January, so.
And November and December.
And November and December, yes. And November and December, yes. If things do slow down, November, December, and January, and we found last year that our meetings were fifteen minutes, half an hour, I mean, it's a lot of travel and a lot of back and forth, very short meetings, so we can combine them.
In late, you know, in December and January, council needs to deal with issues of budget. Not formally, but there's a lot of planning time. So it's not, it's not as if council's not getting together. They focus on the budget during this, this two months.
Go ahead, Steve. Ian, go ahead.
You know, I was just gonna say, I think that makes most sense. Those are the thirty, thirty-five months, so one meeting should do the job.
Steve?
Sorry, I didn't realize that when I looked at it, I thought that it was just the January and December one. Yeah, I mean, you know, stuff happens in October. I'm not really comfortable with eliminating that many meetings. I don't mind December.
January?
January, okay, I guess, but that's starting to cancel a lot of meetings after that. At the very least, I would like to have, I would prefer to eliminate the one in December. It makes most sense for you guys because you're putting everything together for tax season and wrapping up your year. But I don't feel comfortable canceling this many meetings.
Okay, so you're, are you proposing that we can have two meetings in November?
Yeah.
And then one in December and one, well, one in January, one in December? Vice versa?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd rather only just have one month where we're only meeting once than have more than one. It's December and January, I suppose, but I would rather have two in January and one in December as my preference. Because again, stuff happens throughout the year. You usually just have one in January. Yeah, since I've been here. Because it's hard for us to put anything together, just because of December holidays and everything.
Okay. Okay, well then, sure.
Okay.
You've always had two in December and November, you've always just had the one in January.
Oh, that's what it is.
Okay. So we're okay with the one in January. Yeah, I'm okay with one in December. I, you know, we can always call a special meeting if that's required, right? We don't, we have to just give the proper amount of notice. We can call a special meeting if there's something that comes up that needs immediate attention.
And it just needs two weeks to have another regular council meeting.
Some councils don't have any meetings in the summer. I don't think that's
That's not cool there.
So that's, yeah. You know, so this can be amended, Steve, if we find that we need to have another meeting.
We're just, so, just so we understand, we're not, we're only doing one in October, one in November?
Nope. Two in October.
Two in October.
Plus the order revision in the middle. One in November. Tax sale is required, which council's not, doesn't need to attend
Okay.
in November, and then one in December.
Okay.
Okay?
And we can add if we have
We can add if necessary.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right. Moving on to the next resolution. Seven B, Council asks, we asked for this to be on the agenda at last council meeting. Be it resolved to remove Councilor Kamka as the Shoreline Advisory Committee Chair. May I have a mover? Steve? Second? Second? Not seeing any seconds. All right. This resolution does not pass. All right. Thank you. Moving on to another resolution here. Be resolved to disregard the recommendations from the Shoreline Advisory Committee as provided to council in July twenty twenty-five. Steve, is this one you would like to move? Okay. Any second? No second? All right. Sorry, Steve, this resolution does not pass. All right. Moving on to other business. Seven D, Shoreline Advisory Committee Report and Process. Whereas the Shoreline Advisory Committee in July twenty twenty-five submitted to council recommendations for a comprehensive strategy to address the growing concerns regarding unauthorized and potentially unsafe shoreline structures on municipal land within the R Victoria Beach. Whereas the SAC recommendations were posted on the municipal website and noted in the E V Herald on August first twenty twenty-five issue. And whereas council over twenty-six delegation comments on the SAC recommendations at regular council meetings of August fifth and nineteenth, September second and sixteenth, October seventh, and received numerous emails. And whereas council passed zoning bylaws sixteen fifty-one on the eighth of July twenty twenty-five, where it states in section two point one four, development shall be permitted with a development permit in riparian areas in accordance with the zone in which it is located, provided it complies with the following conditions. Under E, proposed development must not impose undue risk to people, property, or water quality, nor interfere with or undeniably compromise the character enjoyment or sustainability of private or public property and existing recreational uses. And areas should be protected from potentially incompatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of those areas in accordance with the development plan. Therefore, be it resolved to approve the process for conditionally regulating and permitting private structures on public property as attached in Schedule A. May I have a mover? Owen, thank you. Second?
Thank you.
Graham, thank you. Discussion, gentlemen?
I would like to compliment our C A O for putting together a very comprehensive plan to move forward on the very challenging issues of shoreline structures. For almost a hundred years, councils have ignored or decided not to deal with this challenging issue. I think we have now, as I've said jokingly, a way out of the wilderness. There's a lot of work to be done. Our C A O has spent quite a bit of time developing a way forward, and I look forward to having SAC work with our C A O to implement the recommendations of the SAC committee. I want to thank them for their efforts. It's been a challenging time. Shoreline committee members have been personally attacked. I've been personally attacked, but the pain is going to be worth the gain.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, so a couple things. I'd just like to point out that I've always seconded every motion that I could, even when there were things that I'd been immediately opposed. So thank you for at least not hearing those last two motions. I'd like to just review a few things. The very first is that with these SAC recommendations and the delegations that we've heard of, residents have been very concerned of the lack of reporting through the, throughout this entire process. There have been numerous delegations that claimed that the S A C engineer was misquoted or that the engineer's comments were ignored in the minutes from the S A C. And that after that, we still have not heard from Mr. Tommy to ensure that he was properly quoted and that all of his warnings of erosion have been heard and were properly characterized in the minutes. There were several claims from the community that the media minutes from the S A C were severely complete. There have been several, several claims that stated that the S A C did not receive emails and communications from the community. And having been with help from, helped by the committee chair, the committee chair then said that, yes, he did in fact withhold those, those emails and communications. The chair, as I said, admitted to holding back communications from the public to the S A C.
Steve, are you dealing with the resolution at hand?
Oh, yes. Because we're about to vote as to whether or not we're about to enforce this or not.
All right. So, so we're moving forward, you're moving backwards.
No, we're moving forward after a vote. This is, this is a discussion on this, as to whether or not we should be moving forward with these recommendations, with this process.
Correct.
Yes. Based on, based on recommendations. So this is all, all relevant. Finally, the chair has been quoted by two very credible people in this community as to not caring whether the existing structures that are there are legal or illegal. Our job as counselors is to enforce our bylaws and to ensure what we're doing is best for the community. And we have an opportunity to deny this, to deny those recommendations and actually allow, if, if we're so concerned with what the people have in their way, to hear from the community, from all of the people who got up and said that they do not want all of these private staircases on public land. We can do that next year. There is a vote coming up where we could have a referendum tied in with, tied in with the, with the democratic election, where everybody can have their say, and the council will have their entire hands completely clean of that, of that decision. But we're saying, no, because this is going to pass, I already know that. But we're ignoring everything that I just went over. So I just, I just want to say one more thing. There's a vote next year. There's an election next year. And it is going to come up that people voted for this who agree that counselors should not care if something is legal or illegal.
That's not what we're voting on, Steve. And Councilor Kamka clarified that comment when he was, when it was directed at him. Most reasonable people would have agreed that his, his clarification made sense. I'm not going to put up with any more personal attacks on the Shoreline Advisory Committee, on Councilor Kamka. I'm not going to put up with any more undermining of council responsibilities. We're all here to do the job to the best of our abilities. We are here to discuss the regulating and permitting process for private structures on public property that is allowed under our zoning bylaw sixteen fifty-one. We have, it is allowed in the bylaw, we have to have a process to move forward, to control it. Any, any, any application we get will trigger a public hearing as part of the conditional use permit. The public will have yet again another opportunity to voice their concerns to the residents who are hoping or wishing or applying to put up private stairs on public land. All of our bylaws that people have brought forward have a line in them or more than one line that says, with council permission. I agree, they didn't get, you know, none of the stairs that are there now, or very few of any, did get council permission. We're trying to deal with that moving forward, not going backwards. And we need a process for that. I know you don't agree, and I appreciate that you don't agree. And that is up to you. That is your right. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Go ahead, Steve.
So what's the next step in terms of what, what we're going to do after this passes? Which is going to pass. After this passes, what are we going to do? Are we going to notify all the people on the shoreline?
That is part of the process. We're going to be, our C A O is going to have a lot of work ahead of them, reaching out to members of the shoreline, our community members along the shoreline who have private structures on public land, and that is the first step.
Okay, so given that.
The document is going to detail in terms of a way forward. I'm assuming that this document will soon be up on our website and available for the community to read and review. I think there will be, obviously, there'll be further opportunities for people to comment on it.
So are, is everybody given that we've already done that previously? We sent out letters to all the shoreline property owners asking them to take possession of the legal structures that were on public land? Are we sending it to all of them? Or are we accepting the fact that all the structures that did not receive somebody taking possession of it will be removed and we're only sending to the ones who said that, yes, that is in fact my structure? Or are we sending it to everybody, allowing them to now retroactively say, oh, yeah, sorry about that?
We're sending letters, my understanding from this document is we're sending letters to everyone on the shoreline who has a set of stairs. So I don't understand the problem with that, Steve. Would you rather
Because this entire process, the, the quiet discussions with the shoreline property owners, the denial of meeting, of meeting with the, with the B B C O A during the zoning process when we
That's all totally untrue. Totally untrue. If we met with the shoreline people, we also met with the B B C O A numerous times, numerous phone calls, to me, to you, to Irwin, to any council member. Everyone had their opportunity
As a board.
As a board, no. I don't think we met, to my knowledge, I got
We did. We did. As Graham recalled and then Irwin recalled after denying that we did in the last meeting. We all recalled.
We all had meetings, Steve. I've had numerous conversations with people on and off the shoreline. What is the point?
The point is, is that when we first sent out the letters asking them to take possession, they refused. Now we're going to send out letters and they're going to say, yes, that is mine. And then they're going to go through the permitting process and they're going to get exactly what they wanted, which is private structures on public land.
Steve, you're talking about letters that went out in two thousand nineteen.
It's irrelevant, it's the one that went out.
It's irrelevant at all. What we're trying to do is solve a problem today. So if something happened in two thousand nineteen, that's fine, that's great. But Lon is going to move ahead with the process here, and we're going to start with what we have, situation we have today. We're just trying to resolve situations.
So can we stop picking and choosing what we want to use here? So we're either looking at the story, the history of this, seeing that they've been there for a hundred years and we have to accept all of that, which by the way, we don't because there's no such thing as squatters, right? From our, from our, from our lawyer's mouth, from what he said. Now, but now we're saying, no, no, we need to, we need to work only with the here and now. So five years ago, we're not going to, we're not going to accept that. But all the things that have been built before that, we are going to accept that. And everything after that five years, for the last couple of years when people have been building, while this has been escalating, this issue's been escalating, even after the memorandums, or the, where we said that we weren't going to allow anybody to build, they did, they did continue to build. And so we're going to accept all that, but we're not going to accept the, the letter that went out five years ago, where we asked people to take possession of their, of their, of their staircases. So that we're going to ignore. The rest we're going to accept. This is picking and choosing. So we've
We didn't have the details from five years ago because you don't.
I have asked multiple times to get the numbers, but distinctly remember, our last C A O, Raymond, told me it was less than ten. He told me that, that the people who took possession of those staircases were less than ten. I've asked Irwin about it, never heard an answer. I've asked you about it, never got an answer. And then there's multiple questions I've asked, this whole process, I've never received answers to.
Go ahead, Lon.
Just, all of them are going to be evaluated in a very specific criteria. If they're safe, erosion criteria, if it's part of the zoning bylaw, that if they don't fit in with, they could do whatever, I don't know how to explain it. But if you don't like them, you can have them removed. I don't know what else to do there from my point of view. This is just something that I put forward to you to move forward. If you do, great. If you don't, just trying to, for me, as someone that has to enforce this and be out there talking to people, if we're going to do something to one person or one structure, it has to apply to all of them, because you don't allow that, but you allow that. And so why? What was it based on? We're trying to apply a certain criteria to all the stuff that's there. Get rid of the stuff that's unsafe or make them upgraded. If they don't acknowledge it that it's theirs, good, then it's the public and then we'll go in and take it out and remove it. There'll be less stuff on the shoreline to worry about. But if they do acknowledge it that it's theirs, it's going to be brought up to code, or if it meets the code, just leave it. And there's a permitting fee that's going to be going out with these letters and a lot of other, other conditions that are outlined in this, in this process. That was a topic of discussion in the special meeting prior to this council, and I don't know, there wasn't a lot of pushback during the meeting. You added some things, you took out some things, you made comments on it. So thank you for that time. If you don't pass it today, we'll work on something else in the future. But if you do pass it, I have something to start with.
So when somebody is on private, I suppose now, private property, it's private structure on public land, is a private owner going to be able to say, you're not allowed on my stairs? Because of private stairs?
Yeah.
That's something I, personally, I don't agree with that, because if you're on public property, it's public access.
It's still, it's still a private staircase, deck, boathouse, whatever. It's still, it's still a private structure. And so is this exclusively for their use?
I don't think they have any right to stop anyone publicly from using it, but they do have a right to stop people from publicly tracing through their yard to get it.
So is it a private structure or is it a public structure? Because if it's private, then you have control over what is private. If it's public, then it's public and it's
Private structure, that's permitted.
Permitted
If you want to specify the If you want to specify the use, when you do the final permission on these, you can specify the details.
And is this going to be under the municipal insurance or is it going to be under private insurance?
The municipality has coverage, our CIO advised us. But the private property owner would be well advised to reach out to their own insurer for their own private coverage.
So when somebody gets hurt on the private structure, which apparently they're publicly allowed to use even on the private structures, then that is somehow going to fall under public insurance?
I'm not an insurer, Steve.
Are we forcing them to take out insurance on this?
It is in their best interests to probably, I'm assuming, to take out private insurance.
So if somebody gets hurt, is that going to come back and hit the municipality?
Anything can come back and hit the municipality.
Can I comment on the insurance issue? Something bad happens on that structure, municipality and the private landowner will be at soup. It will then be a court's challenge to figure out who was negligent. Was the, was the structure not properly maintained? In case that would likely fall back onto the property owner. I think Merrick Morris's comments are bang on. We need to make sure that the private property owners realize that they have a liability exposure and that they should take appropriate steps to notify their insurance company as far as the municipality is concerned. The municipal program that's in place will identify the council and the municipality. So municipality is protected by the plan. Individual property owners potentially could be at risk.
Anything further?
So just to clarify, for this private structure, municipality might be on the hook for a lawsuit over injuries. That this still falls under our, our public insurance, but the municipality is at risk?
Yes. It would then be up to the court to determine whether or not the municipality had been negligent.
Anything further?
No. In the absence of this document, you know, we have no fallback position, at least going forward. We will have a working document that will outline the responsibilities of the municipality. It will lay out some guidelines, some standards that need to be met. And if those standards are not met by the individual property owner, then council has full authority to say no. Fix the problem or take it down.
So prior to, five minutes from now, the council's responsibility was to remove illegally built structures from public land to start the Schedule A, B, C. Now, the responsibility is going to be on us. That is, once we can put this in and they go through this process, then we are going to be liable, possibly the private, private owner. We still haven't clarified that with our lawyers, but we're still going to sign off on this and possibly put the municipality at risk for lawsuits if somebody gets hurt on these structures.
Where, where at this now, we have been for a hundred years, that doesn't change.
If we can remove the structures.
All right, anything further, gentlemen?
No.
I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried, opposed? Carried. Thank you for the discussion, gentlemen, and thank you for all the delegations and the presentations and the phone calls and the emails. Thank you for for that. All right, so anything further into correspondence, information, or announcements? Go ahead, Irwin.
I forgot to mention the police board meeting is this Saturday, October twenty fifth at one o'clock, and we're meeting here at the Social Center.
What time is one thirty?
Uh, I have it at one.
It's one thirty.
Okay.
Irwin, is that a public meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
And is there a purpose for the meeting, the agenda?
Well, we, we're required by the, just as part of, the police board has to have a certain number of public meetings each year. I don't know off the top of my head whether it's two or three, but this is one of the public meetings. We generally, we have one in the fall, sort of fall meeting, we have one in the spring, and we have, we have one in the summertime.
And with the committee that we discussed and agreed to, Ian, hopefully that will coincide with this police board meeting. There might be more information available for us to start working with at this police board meeting. And we can agree that we're going to get together and deal with it, so we'll see how it goes. But it's, it's a public meeting, I attended the last one. There's, there's quite a bit of information there that should be of interest to any, any counselor or anybody concerned about our residents, so you certainly be welcome.
Sounds good. Do you want to then get together just before? Oh, five?
No, that's my left, it's over then.
Okay, sure. We'll go here. Thanks.
One more thing. We did receive a request for some clarification as to the technical, geotechnical engineer's opinion with respect to whether or not stairs cause erosion. I had spoken with the geotechnical engineer and it, discussion will take place at the next formal meeting of SAC and, and those minutes will be distributed. We want to try and provide some. I think the, the issue was whether or not stairs caused erosion. Stairs that are properly designed don't cause erosion. Stairs that are not properly maintained, not well designed, could and will cause erosion.
All right, thank you. Just another update on our meeting with Yarmouth Alexander on Friday. We discussed some policing issues they're having, we discussed the school tax issue. We had a discussion on their short-term rental process, which Steve's been, been bringing up for a few years, and how that's working out for them, the costs of implementation, people buying into it, et cetera, cooperating. And it's been going well, but it is costing them money. We discussed the Traverse Bay Lagoon, which we are half owners of, and the study the RMA have done that mentions the possible need for expansion or other options to ensure a longer lifespan for the Traverse Bay Lagoon. And we talked about higher services, which we continue to provide to some of the RMA beaches area. So it was a good meeting and I haven't had a chance to chat with them yesterday, so I appreciate the opportunity to get together with them once a year or more. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
Be a resolve, the October twenty first twenty twenty five regular meeting of council now be adjourned. Next meeting will be on Tuesday, November fourth twenty twenty five at six P M in Winnipeg. That twenty thirty-five quarter Javie. Ian, a mover? Thank you, Steve. Second, Graham? All those in favor?
All right.
Carried. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you for those who attended online.